Testing one, two, three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
How was your summer?
It was good.
Good to see you.
I was just looking at the board picture.
You look so good. You have your own little, your own little individual look.
Oh, I don't know if that one's up there. It might say I'm still junior year.
I think they're the first student board rep that's like highlighted that, that's right.
Yeah.
And you're on the discussion site. College ads, you can, you know?
Yeah.
They'll look up and they'll see that.
Yeah.
Did you have a good summer?
I did. It was, it was fun because we got to travel and before the pandemic, it was just like something we had planned.
Uh huh.
So we could finally carry food.
Oh, where'd you go?
We went to
And our student board rep Tess.
Here.
And Dr. Davis.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna stand and do the flag salute. Right hand over your heart, flags over here this time.
It tricked you. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to report out of closed session actions taken. The board took no action in closed session tonight. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda, but first a preferential vote from Tess? Great, a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're onto public comments, speakers on agenda and non-agenda items. None? Okay, there are none. So then I will move on to remarks from board members. Does anyone wanna start? Should I just call on you? Megan.
Sure, I'm happy to start. I, I'll be super brief and just say I'm so glad to be back and to see you all. I got the chance to attend, since we last met and hopefully all had a good summer. Got to attend the Kinder orientation at Brookside, which was so lovely. And then I am so lucky to have gotten to accompany you, Dr. Davis, and some of the other board members, as well as Dr. Morales, the county superintendent of schools, on the first day of school visit to some of the school sites. And I could say so much, but I just wanna thank the staff, the families and the students for what was, I think, an incredible start to the school year. The energy was amazing. I will probably be running off of it for the rest of this year, and I just wanna wish everybody a really good, a really good year. That's it for me, thanks.
Since our last board meeting, there were no meetings of the MAC and there were no meetings of the Rancho Simi Park and Rec District, and there were no gatherings of pickleball advocates. That's all for me now, thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. First of all, just thank you to all the staff and our families for just some incredible work that's been done, I think, over the summer, making our schools look so great, to welcome our students and our staff back. And the weeks leading up to school opening, I see a lot of cars in the parking lots, a lot of teachers I know have been here preparing their classrooms, so thank you, and a big shout out to our PTOs as well for the great work that they've been doing. Forms Day seems to have gone really smoothly at all of our sites, and I know a lot of our parent volunteers worked really hard. I also saw the turf over at Medea Creek in those little spots over there. I know that was also PFA donated. So huge thank you to everyone that made our schools look so amazing and welcoming for our students and our staff. And I also attended some of the tours. I was able to do a few of the schools in the morning with Dr. Morales and Dr. Davis and our board members, and it was just so fun, especially being back on elementary school campuses with all the school mascots out there and just such great energy, and I'm just really grateful for everyone's hard work in getting our schools open.
Thank you.
I also wanna extend a warm and enthusiastic welcome back to all of our teachers, staff, students, administrators and families. And a warm welcome to all of our new students and families to the district, including our youngest TK students. This is the first year that we expanded our TK program to include four-year-olds and with classes being added. Am I right about this Oak Hills and Brookside for TK? We were able to see some of those young and happy faces on the first day of school, so wanted to extend them a warm welcome and hope they have a great start to the school year. I also wanted to, like everybody else, commend all of our sites, our principals, office staff, managers, teachers, our administrators here for terrific, I thought, registration planning and execution at all of our sites, which based on feedback from families that received this year have been one of the smoothest, as well as to our parent and student organizations, like all our PTOs and PFAs, our ASBs, our webs, if I'm, if I'm missing any, I apologize. The organizations for the wonderful welcome back events and orientations to make the return and transition to school much easier and fun. Also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Callahan's team and our maintenance crew for all the wonderful and hard work they did this summer, getting our campuses ready for the new school year. I was able to do those first day tours and all of our campuses looked beautiful and were clean, and all the new upgrades just looked amazing. This year also, we have many new faces on our campuses. If anyone read the Acorn and Ventura County Star articles, there were many new teachers that we welcomed and staff onto campuses. So a warm welcome to you, to the many new teachers, aides, coaches and other staff who are new to the district. You're gonna love it here, but I'd also like to take a moment to recognize and appreciate the many veteran teachers, administrators and staff who are celebrating their milestone anniversaries, their 10, 15, 20, 25 and 30 year anniversaries, including Ms. Anino, Huron and Pryor, who are celebrating their 30 year anniversaries. And all the other veteran teachers, staff and administrators, even if you're not celebrating your milestone, just want you to know that you are the steady and strong foundation upon which the successes successes of our district are built, and we thank you for your dedicated service and unwavering commitment to our students into the district. I also wanted to thank Dr. Morales, who to spend, he spent pretty much half a day up until lunchtime. He visited every single one of our sites and campuses. He was, I think, very impressed and we, you know, had the opportunity to talk to him. He was, I think, very impressed with our wellness center, and I think he is very passionate about mental health and improving, you know, mental health supports and social, social emotional programs within the county. And we are looking forward to a great partnership with him. And that's all for my comments.
Thank you, Soi. That was, said pretty much everything I could think of to say, but I just wanna add a hearty welcome back, and I hope everyone had a good summer. Over the summer, I did get a chance to attend the Summer Professional Development Session that the Howard Group did on examining implicit bias that a number of our staff attended. And I thought it was very enlightening and it seemed like the staff enjoyed it and gained some valuable insights. He especially talked about the importance of really getting to know our students, both through data, who our students are and who our school district is, our staff too, through data and also personal connections. And we talked about some of these I raised with Stu at the, at the, at the retreat that we had over the summer. And I just, I would encourage us to continue this work. It's, it's an ongoing, you know, we have to keep looking at the, at these issues in an ongoing way and as we look at our educational program. So I just wanted to mention that I did do that and I thought it was great. I also had the opportunity to go on Tuesday to tour opening day, all of our schools with our fellow board members and Dr. Morales and Superintendent Davis. And I just cannot say enough about how good our schools looked. Really outstanding and the, the, it was just evident in every corner. So thank to, thank you to our staff, thank you to our main scenes, the classrooms, the teachers, like Tina was saying, the work that I know that they must do to get their classrooms ready. And just the joy on the student spaces and enthusiasm in the classrooms that we visited. Really, just like you said, Megan, just put me on a high and really kicked off the school year, right? So, and then also Dr. Morales and how much time he spent with us. I just wanted to give a shout out to him and thank him very much. I think his presence makes our, our school district and the people here feel, you know, seen and important and and we appreciate his collaboration and his efforts in the county. So I just wanted to thank him especially. And that's it for me.
Denise, would you mind if I just added one more thing?
Of course.
Because I, I left out. I, I really wanted to thank our district office leadership team, along with Dr. Davis. I think that, you know, especially the first day of school, you know, the principals and teachers are those faces that our families see, but what people don't realize is that there is so much hard work and preparation that goes in. The leadership from everyone here in the room, on the, in the district office leadership team. I just, you know, a lot of the work that happens behind the scenes don't often get seen by our families. And I just wanted to commend and acknowledge and appreciate all that hard work. I think that this particular summer, some extra days in time were spent to make sure that our registration processes in our first days went as well as they did, and it was so obvious. The first days of every campus that we visited, and I was able to see every one but one just how smooth and how happy everyone was. It just was such a great start to the school year. So Dr. Davis, thank you so much to you and your team.
Thank you, Soi. That's a really, thank you for catching that, because I couldn't agree with you more. I did have the opportunity to attend registration at the high school and at the middle school one of the days. And it seemed like everything was just really in order, and I know how much, you know, the notice parent rights and the messages that have been sent and all of the organization that goes into opening the doors on the first day. So kudos and thank you to our, our leadership and our superintendent and district office. Thank you.
Now we're going on to the remarks from our student board member.
Good evening. I hope everybody had a great summer. I'm very honored to be able to serve my second term this year. So ASP participated in helping out at Oak Park High School's registration over the summer, and many students were able to successfully register. Advanced peer counseling had an engaging freshman orientation on their registration day. Something that I did notice was that a few transfer students were unable to receive their schedules during registration. I'm not too sure behind the reason of this, but it might be something that we can improve on for the next year, since it is beneficial for these new students to see their classrooms beforehand. And it is currently the second week of school. Final schedule changes will be made before Friday. I've also heard many positive opinions on the new bell schedule. I personally feel that these shorter periods are much more beneficial in terms of attention span. Today was the first support day, and I found it helpful to be able to go into my teachers' classes for assistance without worrying about time conflicts. ASP is preparing for Club Week and Homecoming, which will occur on Saturday, September 23rd. Football season is kicking off and school is strongly supporting the great team for their game this Friday. And so this concludes our report for tonight. Thank you.
Tess, I just have a quick clarification.
Yes.
You said that the transfer students or the new students coming in
Yes.
didn't have their schedules. Do you mean that they had their schedules, but they didn't know the location of their rooms?
No, because when I was working it specifically for makeup registration, I had a lot of transfer students come to me because I was doing the filing for the schedules, but then when they wanted to pick up their schedules, they didn't have it. So then what I was told was to tell them to come to school earlier on the first day of school to get their schedules.
Yeah. Typically what happens in those situations is that the transcripts haven't come in yet from the schools they're transferring from. So it takes a while. Sometimes phone calls have to be made before the, you know, it's, it's really hard when kids are transferring. So that's typically what probably happened.
Okay.
Thank you, Tess. We're moving on to remarks from the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to school. It's so great to see everybody. I wanted to start by talking about the Welcome Back Breakfast that we held here at Oak Park High School over by the covered eating area. It was a wonderful event. We had food, we had coffee, we had all kinds of neat stuff. It was a great time for fellowship. People hadn't seen each other, you know, the whole summer, and so we had employees from all over the district, classified employees, certificated employees, management employees. It was really, really great. Introduced our executive team to all the employees, gave a little, some words of encouragement, and basically our theme for the school year, which is growth mindset. We'll be talking about that all year. I don't wanna go into it right now. We talked about growth mindset. Basically, you know, giving everybody a thumbs up for the year. Mr. Peters, the OPTA president, got up and said a few wonderful words with the employees, along with myself. And it was just a really good vibe. It was a really fun morning. And then everybody went off to their school sites and went into their staff meetings. So it was just really fun. I'm really glad we do that. We even brought in a coffee truck from an outside vendor coffee truck that Ms. Jantsch at Medea Creek had done last year, and that one, that was a big hit. So it was really, really good. The second thing I wanna talk about is thank you to all our parent volunteers. There are so many parent volunteers that helped make the school year start. They work in tandem with our rock star administrative teams. Is do a, a great job working together with them and our office staff at all of our school sites. So again, thank you, parent volunteers. Thank you Booster Club, Booster Clubs. I mean, every group out there that supports our schools, you know, OPEF, all the different groups. Really, really appreciate everything you guys do. Third, I'd like to sort of piggyback a little bit on what Tess said about Ms. Kukukas and Ms. Stein at Medea Creek. So Ms. Kukukas here at Oak Park High School and her ASP students, what a great job helping with registration. It was awesome. And the same thing with Ms. Stein at Medea Creek. These were the best registrations I've seen. It's my third time through here, and it keeps getting better every year, and I was really, really pleased with the job they did, the parent volunteers, and of course, the administration of both schools. So I wanna give a shout out to those, to those groups and those people. Next, Mr. Callahan and his crew in MNO. What a terrific job the grounds crew did getting the school sites ready. They look absolutely beautiful. You know, with all the rains that we had this past year, it's great because we had all the greenery and all that. But there was a lot of overgrowth, and they worked so hard the last month prior to school starting. They just did a wonderful job getting all the schools ready, so a tip of the cap to that entire crew, to Mr. Callahan and his group, and the school site, the custodians at the school sites and everyone else that works at the school sites, making sure things are spick and span and clean and ready to go for all of our teachers and our students on that very first day. So congratulations to everybody district-wide in MNO. Really appreciate that. Coming up, starting this Thursday night, two nights from now, is our first back-to-school night. Medea Creek Middle School starts it off. They're the leadoff batters. And that's gonna be fun. And then next week, all the other back-to-school nights will be, will, will, will be in action. And then something else I wanted to talk about really quick, that's really, it's got me really excited. And I know when I, when I got hired by the board and I was announced to the district, to the whole community, I talked about connections for students. My number one thing has always been and will always be, connections for students. Making sure that students feel connected to school. And whether that be a club, whether that be an athletic team, whether that be something in the arts, excuse me, mock trial, speech and debate, robotics, whatever it may be, that is something that my team and I have pushed from the moment we got here. And so now we actually have a full aquatics program at Oak Park High School. And they said it couldn't be done. Well, it's done. And so the last two years, we've had girls and boys swimming, and now we have water polo. And we have our new coach, Mr. Mulcahy, that is gonna lead us into the world of water polo and of CIF. And we're really, really excited about that. And something else that I'm just thrilled about is the girls' flag football, which is an official CIF sport. And we're so excited about that. I had a chance the other day to come up to the high school a little bit after school, and I happened to catch them practicing. And wow, they look really good. Like, they're very skilled. They're very talented. So, but the best thing is, X amount of students now have another connection to school. So if you add up girls and boys swimming, water polo and girls' flag football, wow, so many more kids are connected to school. And then when you loop in everything I said really quickly a few minutes ago, like speech and debate, robotics, mock trial, march, other things like marching band, all the amazing art classes we have at this school, choir, all those things, theater arts. We now have a actual class for drama, for theater arts, that Mr. Schneider will be, is, is teaching already. It just shows that, you know, the comprehensive nature of our school just keeps growing and growing of Mr. McLennahan's Oak Park High School. And I just think it's, it's really wonderful. And what it does, more than anything, it gives all the students at our elementary schools, no matter what elementary school you're at, all the students at Medea Creek, they look and they go, wow, look at all those cool things happening at the, at the, at the high school. Mr. McGugan and I were at Oak Hills Elementary School visiting classrooms, day two of the school year, and we walked into some classes and we talked about that, and kids just lit up. You have swimming now? You have water polo? Wow, that's so cool. You know, that kinda stuff. And even children that are in third, fourth and fifth grade, they see that, and now they have something to strive for. Or they're a musician, they have something to strive for. An artist, they have something to strive for. An actor and actress, right? So that's really cool to me. You know, obviously academics is always number one, because teaching and learning is our first job. But when you loop in these other things and you're educating the whole child in a holistic manner, that's where we separate ourselves from most districts in the state of California. So I think that's really important for people to know out in the community, that we have these programs now and they're matching with our world-class academics. And to me, Oak Park Unified School District is not only keeping up with the world-class education, but I think we're stepping up even higher. So anyway, that was a long-winded way of saying, welcome to the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Okay, we're going to move on to item 4.9, facilities update. Rogany? Can you, can you email it?
I can.
Thank you.
Good evening. There we are. Thank you, Rogany. So as I've done in, in previous years, this is, this is a recap of some of the work that our, our team has done over the summer. And this is just an opportunity to share out some of the projects we worked on. So at Oak Hills, and I, I apologize, I don't have photos for, for every project, but this, this deck would get a little too long, but some of the things that we worked on, we installed pavers in a tough shed next to the fifth grade portables. We renovated two student restrooms, which was a Measure S project, a very, very big project that's still underway right now. Unfortunately, when I was creating this, this deck a couple of weeks ago, that's how they looked. They're, they don't look like a cave anymore. They're, they're coming together with tile and floor and fixtures, but we're, we're still probably about a week and a half away from them being fully completed. And then we did a new carpet installed in room 17. That's photo three there. And we also repaired flooring in rooms one and three, installed new cabinets in room one from a previous leak that occurred during the school year. And then we also have been really working hard with architects on finalizing the design for our new TK classrooms, which is a big construction project coming up through Measure S. That was Oak Hills. Red Oak, a little quieter. As you'll know, the previous year, we did the massive renovation to that campus. It looks brand new. You know, redoing the, the outside of, of Red Oak, and then even the summer before that, we re-carpeted, I wanna say seven classrooms. So Red Oak had a, quite a bit of work the past two summers. This summer, it was just strictly working on the kitchen and ripping up the floor, replacing it, adding new drywall. There was a previously a leak in this kitchen, and so it was really important to rip that, rip that floor up, address the drywall. And we're in the process of reinstalling all of the equipment right now, along with a new, a new oven and new oven hood was just installed yesterday. So pretty soon, Red Oak will be back live. Catherine, in the meantime, has just been working and bringing meals over from Brookside, but by the end of this week, I think the kitchen will be back in action. Let me move over to Brookside. I wanna say this is the most ambitious paver project we've, we've undertaken. This is all done by our ground staff. We have four ground staff. You can see one of them, it's Miguel Martinez, operating our tractor. The, the school had a vision for a teacher's lounge, and so we, we literally carved into the hillside, created a retaining wall, we, we compacted it, and we created this really amazing space that you can see on the, the far right. That's the completed teacher's lounge area. Virginia has ordered tables and umbrella. This is, this is near the, the garden, if you're familiar with the campus. It's on the other side of the garden. And to the right, if you're looking at the photo on the right, to give you perspective, on the right-hand side is the park, May Boyer. And so we also installed that picket fence in the background and the, the swing gate. So a lot of really great work. I'm really proud of the team for their work on that. They're really happy with, with how it turned out. And then we, we did other things. In the playground area, the kindergarten playground, we refilled the, the play fiber, which is the mulch. And then we also installed new flooring in the kindergarten restroom and custodial room. All right, and then we head over to the middle school. We repaired the exterior of the E building. That's photo one. You can see, we took this, this side of this building down to the studs, and we put in new insulation. It turns out there was a manufacturer's defect with this building, where in between the upper and lower story, water was able to penetrate through a seam, and unfortunately, it wasn't something that we could seek insurance money for, because it's been 20 years since that money for, because it's been 20 years since that structure was installed. And there's a clause in there for that. So we had to do this on our own. But we were able to go through the steps of taking this building apart and putting it back together the right way. And so now, you know, going forward, we should not have a leak in either E5 or E10 in the future. We also cleared both rooms with air quality tests as well, to make sure that there was no, you know, issue with the air in both classrooms. And then we moved over to, as mentioned in board comments, there were some areas that were identified in collaboration with PFA that could benefit from a spruce-up with some artificial turf. This serves multiple purposes. It started out as originally, let's do it around areas where there's backpack hooks, because, you know, students on rainy days, there's a lot of mud, and then they hang their backpack, it's a mess, and then they track into the classroom. So we started doing a lot of those areas. And then it expanded into other areas where students actually congregate. And I'm hoping, you know, as the school year progresses, we'll see students actually, you know, enjoying these areas, you know, during their break times. Then photo three is an example of the new flooring. This is our new district standard. It's a LVT product, which is a luxury vinyl tile. It's marginally more expensive than carpet squares, but it has a lot longer lifespan, and it's way easier to clean, and it also just looks really nice. This is, it's like a faux wood-looking floor. It's beautiful. People put them in their homes. And so we installed this new flooring in C3, C8, D1, D1A, and E10, all in rooms that had, you know, dilapidated carpet that were end-of-life. And then another project is we installed fans in the locker rooms. As you can imagine, it's quite warm in those locker rooms. We do not have AC in them. And so being able to have ventilation, even just for the amount of time that students are in there to change, makes a world of difference. So we have these really high-powered fans strategically placed on the walls now, that turn on and just create like a nice little vortex in both locker rooms. And then the last thing is, we worked with the county, the MAC. The MAC contacted the county on our behalf to replace the stanchions on Doubletree Road outside the main campus. And they keep getting knocked down periodically, but they're working on a more long-term solution. But they were at least able to get them all up again before the school year. All right. And then we move to the high school. First project, we installed new flooring again in the band room in R16A. You'll notice in the band room, we did go with the carpet squares, and that's just for acoustics. But I actually wish I had a before-and-after photo. If you had been in the band room prior, it was a little embarrassing. I'm really proud of how it looks now. Number two, we did a lot of work on the varsity baseball infield. You can see in this photo, the new dirt, and then also the new grass. Number three, we installed a discus platform ring and cage on the lower field at the high school per the coach's request. He had procured the materials, and then we did the installation. Then, fourth, we installed new offices in the college and career center. This was, you know, something that was requested by the counselors and something that Dr. Davis had mentioned to me. And we had spoken about, you know, the need to have privacy between the counselors and the students when they're having sensitive conversations around, you know, college decisions and, you know, funding for college and so forth. Fifth, of course, this room that we're in right now, we painted G9, the ceiling, the walls, the hallway, as well as the seats that you see in front of you. And then the sixth project was the crash-out gate behind the library needed to be reinforced. We worked on that. And then lastly, we upgraded the sound system in the pavilion. Then over at the district office, Oak Park Independent School and Oakview High School, we installed new offices in R3, very similar to what we did in the college and career center. We also installed new flooring, right, in the staff lounge at Oakview High School. That's photo number two. Number three, if you'll recall, our district office conference room, if you've been in there recently, there's new wall panels up to help with acoustics that was recently done. And then we have the generator that was installed at the district office, which was a four-year project from grant application to implementation. But it's finally here, it's running, and it actually turned on automatically when the power went off during the last month, and helped essentially not create any kind of power loss at the district office, which was really awesome. And then we also, just internally, as a maintenance and operations team, we just made a concerted effort to clean up our warehouse and our MNO yard, which just needed some spring cleaning, but we did it in the summer. And then we have district-wide activities, right? And so when students are away, as you can see, this is sometimes, it's an extremely busy time for our department, because we're able to do these dusty, noisy, loud things. But then we're also able to do some of these preventative things as well. And thank you for the shout-out to the team and custodians. They worked extremely hard to clean the campuses. That was a big thing that the custodians worked on. We had our vendors out to trim trees district-wide. Our grounds team, you know, despite all those projects they worked on, they still carved out the last three weeks to just, they worked a lot of overtime this summer to just get each campus dialed in. They worked a lot of Saturdays as well, prior to the start of school. And then they also worked to remove weeds 100 feet from all of our structures for the fire department. We had our vendors out to test our water backflow devices, inspect our elevator wheelchair lifts. We have all of our fire extinguishers certified. We inspect and clean our solar panels, our fire alarms and fire doors, our gym bleachers at both the middle and high school, and our basketball backstops. And then we're in the process right now of replacing each of our water filters district-wide, and as well as our HVAC filters. And we're working with CalShape this year, which is the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency Grant, to be able to replace filters, and then also reserve money in the future for upgrades, hopefully targeting Brookside in the future for actual infrastructure, HVAC system upgrades. And then we also, we have a fleet of vehicles. So we have to continue to maintain our fleet. We do this during the year, but summer is a great time to also get them tuned up. And then we have our work orders, which is our day-to-day work. We have, you know, we have our team, our ground staff, we have our district-wide head custodian in the department, we have Maggie, who's my right-hand, the backbone of our department, who's administrative. And then we have our three maintenance engineers. And they, you know, are basically jack-of-all-trades, and they go from campus to campus to repair and fix things. And that can be anything from, you know, there's a trip hazard on the floor with a carpet tile lifting, to the light is out, to the plumbing is backed up, to really anything you can think of that's wrong physically with a building. And so we started the summer with 339 uncompleted work orders. During the summer, we had 199 new work orders added. We completed 180. That being said, we also had, you know, of our three maintenance engineers, one of them was on vacation for a good portion of the summer, from some time he had accrued. And then so we ended the summer at 3:58. As of this morning, when I was looking at the numbers, we're back down to the 330s. So we're right about where we started. And that's not completely uncommon this time of year. It tends to be very cyclical. Right at the very end of summer, we tend to get, or I'm sorry, right at the end of the school year, we get a wave of work orders that schools are hoping are completed during the summer. And then when everyone gets back, we get another wave of them. And so this is going to be a priority moving forward. Next slide. So we'll continue to address our open work orders. And then, you know, looking ahead, we also have, aside from the two student restrooms at Oak Hills that I showed you photos of on the slide, we have two more that are part of the Measure S budget to get to. And I'm working with Heather on schedule for that. It looks like we're going to target winter break for those, give our TK students a chance to get used to walking, you know, to the restrooms, and to settle in a little bit before we do another project. And then we're going to be requesting bids and selecting contractors for the Oak Hills TK project, another Measure S one. We're going to continue to utilize CalShape for upgrades, as I mentioned, targeting ideally Brookside for upgraded equipment. And then every year, we perform an annual fit assessment, which is a mandate. It requires our maintenance engineers to go into every single physical space within the district and get eyes on everything from the ceiling to the floor. And there's a checklist where we mark anything that needs to be corrected. So we do that once a year. And so we'll do that again this year. And the LCAP is great because we record the metrics there. But then there's also the input that we receive from students. And so, for example, this past year, we received the feedback that the restrooms needed to be restocked more during the day. And so Jim, who's our district-wide custodian, was able to make that, implement that with the head custodians. And another thing that came from the LCAP was feedback about, you know, repairing partitions in the student restrooms here at the high school. And so, you know, again, it was something that we were able to implement. But we want to try and look, use our fit assessment as a tool to, you know, address these things proactively. And also, you know, another thing that we're trying to really work on is the feedback loop. So even when our custodians are in these spaces, and if it's a space that they see, you know, encouraging them to put in a work order, so it's on our team's radar as well. So we don't have to wait necessarily till an LCAP, you know, to receive that feedback. And then the last thing, you know, on the list right now, big thing, is creating an infrastructure needs assessment district-wide. This is really about looking at, what are the needs of our district infrastructure-wise? What's the schedule in the future for how much money we need to set aside for additional flooring in the future, for additional HVAC upgrades, for utilities, for flooring, for doors, these types of things. And really, having that mapped out over a longer period of time to help us make, you know, better decisions. And that was everything I had. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Brendan. This has been great, and the schools look fantastic. I just had a question about the work that was being done. I saw on Canaan on that corner, there was like a dirt patch that was there.
Canaan and Oak Hills Drive?
Yes, I think so, yes.
Yeah, so that's actually part of the Monarch Butterfly project?
The Resource Conservation District.
Correct. Yeah, so for those who aren't familiar with that, we have a grant with the Ventura County Resource Conservation District, where we're creating Monarch habitats. And there's three locations for them. One is the high school, the other is Red Oak, and the other is Oak Hills. We started at the high school. And so there, I think we're going to see this pick up a bit more speed here soon. Tammy and I are involved with this grant. I'm a little bit more involved from the facility side, and Tammy, from the curriculum side, because we're looking to get interns again this year from the high school or from Oakview, to be able to help with some of the community outreach around the project. Yeah.
No questions for me. I just want to say thank you for taking a proactive approach with the fit assessments and the needs assessment. And thank you for incorporating the LCAP feedback as well. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
As a road warrior who's been in 100 Hampton Inns, the flooring you have chosen is also been put in every Hilton, Hampton Inn property in the United States. So there are fantastic efforts of procurement excellence have been replicated by you at a much lower budget. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do you have anything?
I just wanted to echo, thank you very much. I did have a question, just generally, along the line, well, first a comment and then a question, along the lines of what Megan said. I just wanted to thank people for the feedback that they gave in the LCAP and for incorporating, you know, the work that people raised. So that worked really well. The other question I had was, when we were on campus for the, with the sheriff, with the active shooter, Truel, I think that one of us, I can't remember who asked about sort of like anything that they saw that might need to be looked at. And one of the things was just identifying the, what were you going to say?
No, go ahead.
Oh, identifying the buildings really well, because you know, all the little maps that are in those plastic sleeves. So if the fire department comes or someone comes, there's like the map of the area, and they can see G, A, B, C, D, or wherever that is. Some of the buildings were marked better than others, and they pointed that out to us. And so I was just wondering and looking ahead, if you could maybe add that to your list, if it's, I would think, but I don't know, that it's not a huge cost to improve some of the signage of what buildings are what. And we were just here, I don't know about the other campuses across the district, but it was just something I wanted to mention to see if we could, we could add it to the, just to your radar.
Definitely. Yeah, I think that's very worthwhile, and it wouldn't be a huge budget item at all. And I still get confused sometimes, being on this campus in particular, with what building is that again? And you have to look at the, you know, the classroom sign to really know which building. So I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay. Yeah, they talked about, we have our roofs.
Our roofs are marked, but if you're on the ground, you're right. It's a great idea. Thank you.
And actually, if I can add to that, I think somebody mentioned the PA, checking the PA systems as well in that same, at the same event. So if that also falls under your purview, then that would be great, too. Just to add to your list of work orders, I guess.
It does. The PA system's been on our radar for a while, and hopefully will be part of a larger discussion for Measure S. There's some funding that, you know, we'd need to tie to it.
That'll be part of the needs assessment that you're looking at.
Absolutely. Be part of the needs assessment, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Did you have something, Joe?
Yeah, I was, sorry, I was just going to say something real quick. Mr. Benioff, Mr. Benioff and I have had discussions about repainting. Several years ago, Mr. McGugan sort of piloted, you know, getting the room numbers, building numbers painted on the roofs. But that's a number of years ago. They're starting to fade. So we're talking about painting them. We had that discussion, and we had the same discussion about the building.
Oh, you already did, okay.
We had the discussion. Now it has to go to the next level and move up. But thank you for reminding us.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Oh, did you have something, Sway?
No, I just wanted to repeat kind of just our thanks, and just what a great job your staff and everyone on your team, the custodians, the site crew, just how great our campuses look. I mean, they just have not looked as good as they do now. So I just wanted to just extend that recognition and appreciation.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Brendan. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to five, business session consent agenda test. Do you have a preferential vote on accepting, approving, excuse me, the consent agenda? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item six, business services. Number one, approved resolution 23-13, California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency Program.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Adam Rauch. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Business Administrative Services. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have about this item. Back in April, we brought the resolution for the HVAC portion of the CalShape program. And now I'm bringing forward the resolution for the plumbing portion. Resolution needs to be, needs to be approved in order for us to receive it. We've given our allocation. We have to pass a resolution in order for the funds to come in. We've actually received our funds for the HVAC portion, and now it's time for the plumbing portion. Any questions about anything CalShape?
Just a quick question. The plumbing portion, does that, that's a piece of the overall, I think it was back in April, 650?
It's its own allocation. The HVAC was about $625,000, and the plumbing's about $116,000. And it's fairly prescribed, you know, just real quick, in terms of the in terms of the HVAC and such, the larger portion. It's fairly prescribed of what that money is already allocated for. But the hope is, a big chunk of that money is for the assessment piece. And once that assessment piece happens, which will be good for us, as Brendan talks about, you know, us doing our sort of our district-wide needs assessment, sort of because it gives you an idea of where your HVAC systems are. But the hope is, as the CalShape program, you know, continues to move on, the next phase of it everyone anticipates is going to be the actual remove and replace. This is very, you know, small compared to the potential it has for when we identify a project to completely, you know, redo a whole campus, you know. And so, but a needs assessment has to happen, which is a large portion of that $625,000.
I don't have any questions, but just a thank you to the team for just being very proactive in applying for this funding. I always know that it takes a lot of effort to go through all the state applications and applying for these extra funds. But it's so important to kind of maximize our general fund. So we really appreciate that.
And we've talked about it, you know, I know we said it, you know, as the season of Measure S, you know, as we see what kind of funds we have left. We've discussed it with Siri C, that as we go into a season where, you know, Measure S really was, you know, the lifeline that we really tapped into, that projects are going to really require us to be more creative and split fund things. And this is just another example of, yeah, that, you know, this will, what would have been on that needs assessment, more than likely, you know, where, you know, we would have had tapped for another resource, will be, you know, CalShape program, taking care of whatever that project is. And know that that's something that we'll do as new funds become available, as it's part of our goals, you know that.
Any other questions? Okay, sorry, I thought you were telling me something else. Tess, do you have a preferential vote on this? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're going on to approving the joint use agreement with West Valley, item six two, approved joint use agreement with West Valley Soccer League.
You know, we've had a relationship with West Valley Soccer League, you know, going back to 2011, when we, you know, engaged in a joint use agreement with them. That was actually a 20-year agreement that kind of went on in perpetuity, which helped put in our turf field. Well, in 2021, we did terminate that agreement. We sort of came back, which was part of the provision to say, hey, if there are programs, you know, that essentially our programs take first priority. And there was an increased need because of the increased sports programs that we had offered at the time in 2011. We didn't have, you know, a full soccer, girls' soccer program. We didn't have the lacrosse program. So there was a need for us in the scheduling Monday through Friday. But we, you know, did, after we terminated that agreement, we did engage into a two-year joint use agreement that where they no longer had access to, because the other older joint use agreement included the field that the, at the district office included Oak Hills, it included Brookside, a number of fields in the district. And then this really just restricted it down to the stadium use for weekends, nothing Monday through Friday. And so we signed that two-year agreement. Well, that two-year agreement is now expired. And they're looking to, we're looking to engage in another two-year agreement with them. I've, you know, run, every time, you know, we have these conversations, we work really close with the high school in terms of what their needs are. And it's said, hey, you know, any updates since, you know, which really was the, you know, what led us to have, you know, terminate the original agreement was with talking to the high school, how are things going there? And them giving us feedback saying, hey, we're really pressed for time here, and it's difficult for our programs. We did the same thing prior to bringing this before you, reaching out to the high school to make sure that there isn't any concerns about the times that we have allotted for the West Valley Soccer League. Knowing that, per the contract, the agreement, anytime we want, if there is, you know, say, you know, there's a football team is, you know, gets to the playoffs and they want to do a Saturday practice, we can take that Saturday back with very little notice to them. So it does, you know, give us plenty of opportunity to use our facilities if need be. Any questions about the agreement?
I had a question about, a couple of questions. One was, we had a gentleman come and speak to our board about the community-run club being, not being able to secure any time members of the community who go through the typical process to reserve the field. And I was just wondering if that, they've been accommodated? And if this, you know, water wouldn't impact them?
Are you, no, are you speaking to, when the gentleman came here to the board? Or has it been another conversation since?
No, the one that came and spoke to the board.
When he came, no, we, it is, I mean, we have, you know, we try to find times when we can, because the difficult thing is that organization likes their set times that they've had during the week. And just as I, like I have said, what sort of, you know, prompted us to not have Real Socal be on our field Monday through Friday is because of the number of programs that are there during, during the week. You know, it becomes a danger when you have lacrosse. And I'm not sure if you've ever seen a lacrosse ball, how heavy those balls are when it's not caged in. And so if people are running around the track with lacrosse going on, it just creates problems. So first and foremost, I know that Jason Mesky at the high school has worked very hard to make sure that they are a lot of times, they might not be their most desired times. But we have worked with them to make sure, and yes, we have, so. And that's not in terms of, they use, they go through the facility use process, not the joint use, which would be separate outside of our facility use.
Right, just wanted to see if we were able to do both.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to add, I was approached at one of the schools on the first day of school by some parents who happened to be runners in the community. And so they were asking about access before hours. So I just didn't know, you know, what our policy is regarding access to the track in general. But, you know, on the note of that run club, I, you know, basically through that.
So something like that, it would be, they would start with the, with our facility use process. They go on to our, if you go to our website now, and which I would, anybody who asks you, I'd just say, you know, go to the business services section, and it has the facility use, which prompts them to go to Facilitron now. And they would just plug in what facility they want and the times they want to do it. And at that point, it would become a question that high school would have to authorize. It's making sure that it fits in their schedule. And if, you know, all of a sudden, they start denying a lot of times, we'd want to know, you know, what's going on, why are they? But the high school's been very accommodating when they can be for the facility use process.
And then the other, did you have a question, Jim? The other question I had was, we'd asked a question about covering the wear and tear costs associated with their use. But is this a comparable rate that we're charging if they, you know, comparable to someone who is coming through that regular facility?
I would say it's a, you know, it is at a, if you were to plug in every single thing that they would be using in the Facilitron and that, it would be, it would be more. But at the same time, you know, I do think if you're looking at strictly the wear and tear for the stadium field, which is kind of the bulk of what we're concerned about in 10 years, or 12 years, with the useful life, I think they are covering more than, I think that they're covering a fair share, what I would say, on the wear and tear of the field.
Adam, I thought I saw it in the clause in the contract, too, that if there's any specific damage that's attributable to their activity, that it's, they will cover that specifically outside of the normal wear and tear.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. And it's something that we, I mean, we assess this every, you know, in two years, we'll assess it again in terms of what we believe is fair at that time, based on the needs and the district. Knowing that at any, you could sign this tomorrow, and our needs could change, and we can terminate, you know, immediately per the term. There's neutrality of remedies clause in here that allows us to get out whenever we want, for any reason or no reason at all.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Nope, is there a preferential vote, Tess? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Adam.
Great, thank you.
We're on to seven, human resources. Number one, annual teacher assignment report for 2324.
Good evening, thank you. Each year, we submit to the board a report of fully credentialed teachers who may not have formal credential, but do have the correct number of units required for the knowledge to teach that specific subject. So the list given to you tonight that you have, breaks it down specifically for each teacher. And these are assignments that are in accordance with the requirements of ed code and also the California Teaching Credential.
Yeah, I just wanted to pop in really quick. These teachers have their base credential. This is, but this is another course that we need them to teach, that they have units that will allow them to teach that. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Questions? Nope. Tess, do you have a preferential vote? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Stu. We're on to item eight, board. Number one, review and approve the board goals. Well, wait a minute, is it the board goals or the district goals? Oh, first is board, right? Okay, point one is review and approve district goals for 2324. So that's, hold on, I'm sorry, everybody. Let me just see if I'm talking about the right, yes. So there we are, the district goals, it's page, district goals for 2324. So I guess I'll just take a moment to say that over the summer, or actually, we started before the summer, the Board of Education worked really hard in coming up with these goals and objectives. And I just wanted to say that, that the way we, how we came up with them, we really listened, and we had heard all year long from our educational partners. We heard public comments, people had written to the board about various topics. We went to Board of Education office hours. We heard from our superintendent and our staff when they went to office hours and shared with us what they learned there. We had our giant LCAP survey that Tammy did such a great job of getting so much feedback and organizing the feedback, or Tammy and her department. I'm sure a lot of people helped with that, Tammy, to give us information there. We had our nutrition department, our child nutrition department do a massive survey last year. We did a follow-up survey to our LCAP initial stakeholder feedback information. We've visited many sites. We have our own experience as parents and community members. And the WASC, the WASC report. And I just wanted to kind of, those are the things that I can think of. There's even more. But these weren't just the five of us sitting in a room together, coming up with whatever we thought or felt. Like, we really took time to cultivate all that we heard and try to come up with our goals for the year. And, you know, CSBA, we were, I mentioned this when we were on our retreat, that CSBA has published an article and research about the school board's role in creating conditions for student achievement. And it really provides a great rundown of how boards govern effectively to improve student learning outcomes. And they listed key factors, and we considered all of them as we came up with these goals and objectives. And so I really want to commend the board and the staff, Dr. Davis and your staff, for working with us and helping shape these with us. And I don't know if anybody else has any other comments, but I just, I really did want to commend all of you. We have a relatively new board, and you really undertook this task with, it's a really important job, and you undertook it with, you know, so much thought and care and concern for others. And so I want to thank you all.
Denise, thank you for the introduction. I would wholeheartedly agree. I think this board, I was just very, very proud during this working process to see folks who really, I think, believe in servant leadership. And that is really listening to the constituents. That includes all of our staff, all of our student feedback throughout the year on what really mattered. And it was really about making sure that we captured that feedback from all the staff listening sessions, the surveys, all the forms of feedback that we've solicited throughout the year, and tried to really incorporate these into these goals. Keep in mind what our task is as a goal, our task as a board is, with the CSBA background, and that document is so important. And it's something that they really impressed upon us during our Masters in Governance training, which I think some of our members still need to go to. But that document was really kind of the foundation for many of the sessions that we had. Really was our primary responsibility as a governance board in regards to student achievement and cultivating that climate with our staff to support that. So I was just really proud of the work that was done. There were many hours, many thoughtful discussions linking it back to the LCAP and student outcomes and data. So it was really a very strategic and targeted effort. And I really thank everyone involved and thank the staff as well for their support of these goals and objectives. And hopefully, together, we can really make some progress.
I wanted to, I echo all of those comments. It was really a pleasure working with all of you, including Dr. Davis and our staff. There were a lot of hours that went into this. But I, you know, I feel very proud about the work that we put into this. But I also wanted to mention and thank our president of the board, Ms. Helfstein, for, people probably don't realize, because a lot of this is done, you know, at board meetings that maybe a lot of people don't go to. But this process this year was very different from previous years. We started this work very, very early so that we could come back to the public with our goals in place and approved and announced at the start of the school year. And that took a lot of preparation and planning by you, Denise, and together with Dr. Davis and working through, and then with Brogdoni's help as well, on building that into the governance calendar. And I hope that this is a process and a timeline that we can continue moving forward, because I think it's a really good one. So I just wanted to thank you, Denise, for that.
I also want to give big kudos to the board, starting with President Helfstein, Vice President Wang, Trustee Hardy, Moynihan, and Lanceman. You know, a lot of boards, they just kind of just roll over stuff from year to year, and they just kind of, you know, cut and paste and fill in things and things like that. And that has its place, but not any Oak Park United High School district. What this board did was they took every piece of data input that they got and everything that President Helfstein just said, no matter where it was from, LCAP survey, wherever it's from, the WASC report at Oakview High School, Oak Park High School, you know, whatever, they took all those data points, and they put it together and had major discussions. And this wasn't just one meeting, these were several meetings. And they relished the input from staff, they relished the input from our site administrators and those types of things. Rogdoni was amazing, working with President Helfstein and kind of getting everything, you know, coordinated and put together for the board. This was a, they're being very humble, this was a monumental task. And I think these goals are very honorable. I think they're, you know, they're smart goals, right? They're things we can do, they're things, they're timely, they're results-oriented, they're attainable, they're measurable, you know, all those different types of things. So a big shout out to the entire Board of Education for the work you guys did. You guys did a ton of work. And the other thing that's so important about district goals, they need to be aligned to the LCAP. Otherwise, you, you know, they're really part and parcel of one another. So to not have them aligned, like I've seen in some other places in the United States, I mean, the state of California, is really troublesome. Whereas here, they're aligned. And the reason it's important they're aligned is because of that survey and because those educational partners, which include all our employees and our students and our parents, right? So that's the community of the Oak Park United High School district. So I think that's sort of the big picture. And then from my team and I, with the umbrella of growth mindset, pretty much spanning all of these, and then looking at these goals and looking at hitting head-on, you know, these different goals, I think that makes even more meaningful, to do all we can to make sure our students, if they're struggling or whatever, to encourage them, to keep them going, to do everything we can to let them know that, you know, it's, you know, intelligence isn't set, you know, you can build your school, your skills, you can improve your skills, much like a coach does with their players or a band director does with their musicians. You know, everybody can improve. And if you don't believe that, you believe that you have, then you have a fixed mindset, which is a no-go for me. Fixed mindsets, everybody can improve, doesn't matter who you are. You could be a teacher that's taught for 45 years, a teacher's taught for six months, superintendent that's been an educator for 37 years, or someone else who's been who's been in education 12 years. We can all improve. Every single person can improve every single day. But the main thing is the mindset. So you know what, I can get better at that. And if we can instill that in our students and encourage them in a wonderfully positive way, it's, it's gonna be amazing, the achievement results at the end of this school year. But these goals are what guides it all. So thank you to the Board of Education for the Oak Park United School District.
Thank you. And along those same lines, you were talking about the LCAP, but also the site plans. And, and I feel like having these established now, the sites are, we're all, we're all in lockstep and, and that's really the way it's supposed to be. Yeah, and I love the analogy about the growth mindset, because there's so much exemplary work already underway across our school district. And, you know, the goals are just an effort to nurture and improve and keep up that, that, that culture of continuous improvement. And so, yeah, I want to acknowledge that. Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Nope?
I can't say it any better than any of you, but I do just want to put my thanks on top of that. To all of you, to you, Dr. Davis, to the rest of your team, I really just want to make sure to say thank you as well for all of your time and effort on this.
I'll be very quick to be the last one to comment. Megan and I are the newbies on the board here, so this is our first radio, to use your expression. I have emerged from this process with the sense that we had a, a great car and we're fine tuning an engine. We're not trying to put in a new engine or new wheels or new suspension, we just want to make sure that everything's running correctly and we're not getting too far away from a gas pump. What I'm impressed by is that this is really public education in action. These are parents trying to serve children and the support staff, the administrators, the teachers in particular, who make excellence in education happen. That's a lot of juggling, that's a lot of tuning of the car. And the way you do it is by having a good vision and measurements for getting to that vision. And what I really have to admire, Denise, President Helfstein, and our more experienced members, not that we weren't trying, is you brought years of experience to what are we about and how do we get there? And it was a pleasure to watch. And I think anyone who has a chance to read these goals in detail will be really pleased by the job that was done by this board.
Definitely a team effort, group effort. Okay, so I guess we are approving them. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Oh, wait, no, Tess, preferential vote. Now, I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We're moving on to item eight two, review and approve the board goals for the 2324 school year. These are just an extension, these are just ours, our board, not the district. And I didn't have any changes to them. I know we wrote these a while back, so I didn't know if anyone else had anything. No? Okay, Tess, do you have a preferential vote? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we're on to item nine, which is, what is it? Oh, we have to do our governance handbook, I'm sorry. Is it eight, three, or nine? My staple's in the way. Eight, three, okay. So review and approve the board governance handbook for 23 and 24. And this was just really the statistics of, of our students and our staff and our district. There was some changes there. And then also to the, to the governance calendar, right? Yeah. But no, I think content or substance-wise, like in terms of policies or procedures changing for the board. Anyone have any? No? Anybody? Okay, Tess, preferential vote. And I wanted to thank you, Roganey, for your help with this. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. So then we have item nine, open discussion and future agenda items. Anybody?
You did such a great job with the governance calendar that are.
This might be a record for how quickly, I'm not used to it, I'm in shock, because it's, I don't know what time it is, it's very early for us. But, yes, but one thing we just wanted to mention, as far as future items, is a possible special meeting for the week of August 28. Okay, so then the 29th would be, okay. So you'll, I know that everybody doesn't have their calendar right now, but Roganey's going to send out an email and get, see if you guys can do a special meeting on the 29th. And then that's it? So is there any other open discussion items? No? Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned at 7:42 PM.